Good evening and welcome to the Kings Board of Education Work and Regular Board Meeting on Tuesday, December the 10th. Mr. Morrow, may I please have you call roll?
Ms. Phillips?
Yes, I'm here.
Ms. Groff?
Here.
Ms. Callen?
Here.
Mr. Scurll?
Here.
Mr. Belfrom?
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Morrow, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Callen?
Yes.
Ms. Groff?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Scurll?
Yes.
You're now ready for presentations. I'll turn it over to Mr. Sears.
Yep, thank you, Board of Education, and those are in the audience this evening. We have three presentations up tonight. And first up, we are going to start with our monthly RACE presentation. So please welcome Gabby Cabrera and Taylor Kleis for the update on Kings High School.
Thank you so much for having us back. We're so excited to be here and share some more great things. I'm Gabby and this is Taylor. And then first up with our athletics, as always, our basketball teams have had great seasons so far. Our girls played just last night with a big win against Turpin, and then our men's team had their first game this past Friday with a 30-point win over Milford. And then the following Saturday, they went holiday shopping for some less fortunate students within the Kings District.
Our bowling teams are already well into their season. The men's and women's team are both tied for first in the ECC. Our swimming team had an optional beginning of the season meet, and they all swam great, especially Nathan Klassmeyer, Chase Burdine, Sam Shrimplin, Emerson Schroer, and Ava McClung, who all made the finals. And our wrestling team were runner-up at the Taylor Rumble on the River Invitational. So awesome start to all of our winter sports seasons.
And then we had another signing day this past Wednesday. We had five seniors sign Cage Payne, Nate Lyman, and Cato Meisner for football, Tommy Clark for basketball, and Aiden Thomas for soccer.
Transitioning into our academics, our Spanish National Honor Society got to volunteer at KME's annual cultural celebration night titled It's a Small World. We got to help serve food from Honduras, Venezuela, Puerto Rico, and Ecuador. We also got to assist the kids in making Flor de Noche Buena or poinsettias to represent Christmas in Latin America. So we had a super fun time getting to do that.
Our National Honor Society members have been super busy this December. They're sponsoring a supply drive for the Ronald McDonald House. They've been offering peer tutoring for fellow students who might need a little extra help before midterms, and then a holly jolly trolley for faculty and staff just to spread some holiday cheer.
So the Frontside Center for Grieving Children offers a school outreach program where for the past five weeks, six students, including myself, got together to engage in activities focused on lightning grief together. During these sessions, we get to talk about our loved ones, create grief-related crafts, and build meaningful connections. Something we learned is that 1 in 10 students will experience the loss of a loved one during their four years of high school. So although grief and loss is something that seems super isolating, it's actually a lot more common than you would think sadly. And then up in the picture, we have our pot that was broken into several different pieces, and then inside, we wrote about our emotions related to our loss. On the outside, we wrote about ways we've coped with our grief and our loss. And something that was really cool was by the end of our session, we each had each other's name written down as people who helped us cope with our loss, and our pot can be seen in the counseling office.
Our Employability and Careers classes were visited by the Elite Welding Academy. This gave students a chance to learn about welding and everything that that career would come with. This kicked off their Skilled Trades Month, where they'll be visited by a few different speakers and participate in a few different activities, just to learn about different careers that they could go into.
Mr. Moore's mythology class, I've really been getting into Norse mythology recently, even converted his classroom into a meat hall, complete with flameless fire, sweet mead, Twizzlers, which represented red meat, and all of the Viking accessories. They got to step into the Dark Ages and bring the Volcunga Saga to life.
And then Mrs. Endress's Human Body Systems classes have been learning all about the different brain functions, and so they got the chance to dissect a sheep brain. After they took everything apart, they labeled it using everything that they had learned about the human brain.
For our arts, each year, the choir visits a different Ohio University, and this year it was Miami University. They got to explore the campus, eat in the dining hall, and even rehearse with the Miami choirs. They had the chance to ask these students about college life and how choir fits into it. And then on October 25th, the Chamber Choir returned to perform with Miami's choir, and several Kings Choir alumni, who are now attending Miami, joined in to support.
And then our band has several holiday performances coming up. Their first one this Saturday at the Masonic Center, and then they are also going to go perform for our sixth graders at CIS. The quartet you see up there is actually planned a set of holiday songs. It is completely student-led, and they had no help from teachers, so they perform before their holiday concerts.
This week is audition week for April's performance of Chicago Teen Edition. The cast list will be posted on Saturday with our first read-through on January 10th, right after winter break, and the theater department is super excited to hit the ground running on this super fun show.
And then finally, our RACE Students of the Month this month are Kalia Jones, Owen Goldstein, Mary Royer, Anna Klassen, and Zanib Kasumi.
Thank you so much for your time. We look forward every month, and we'll see you next month.
All right, we have two more presentations. Mr. Belfrom, good to see you. Next up, we have Gregor Lewis from SHP. This evening, he is going to provide us some of the latest design images from the new Kings High School, and some to talk about some of the CAT team process that went through last week. So welcome, Gregor Lewis.
Thank you so much. I just have to say, you guys have the coolest students. I mean, not just the two girls that just presented and left, but we hosted a group of about 40 architecture students at our office today from the Kings District. They came down on the bus. We talked about the profession, professional practice. We talked about the design process. We talked about how our firm is structured. We gave them a tour, shared with them several projects that they're working on, and they were just like so engaged and so excited. And for us, it's really rewarding to have that connection with the students and be able to kind of infuse the energy from them and from our entire group that we've been working with into this project. And what we want to do as designers and members of SHP is deliver a school that is as cool as your students. And I'm hoping that you will see that tonight when we share some of the images with you.
We're going to hold you to that.
Oh, I hope so. And if it's not as cool as your students, then I want to hear about it, so we can make it cooler. So we've all been through like the planning process. In terms of the overall schedule, we're moving into the design development phase, where we go beyond the initial planning and programming phases, and we're starting to get into some details, material selections. So what you're going to see are some more realistic exterior images of the different sides of the building. And we're going to end on the event entry, where we've been spending most of our time trying to really incorporate the Kings brand and ideals into that event entry, because that's going to be our primary entry for the students and visitors who are coming for performances in the theater or competitions in the arena. So this is our main entry, which faces west onto Columbia. This is where parents will come and drop off. This is right adjacent to our administration. So this will be the experience that they'll have. We see the kind of gray material that represents the base material, and then the tan material at the top is our academic areas. So we've got our classrooms on the second and third floors there. Students will kind of, sorry, parents and visitors will enter adjacent to the music spaces that are on the right. And this is the view kind of approaching the building from Columbia. So getting back a little bit more distance, we can see the overall mass, the volume of the three-story academic wing, where we've got the two stories of the academics. In the front, in the foreground of this image is our arts and some of our special spaces for the students. The main entrance that we just looked at is over to the right of the image. This gives us an aerial view of that same academic block with the two academic stories, the second and third floors there. This starts to give us some perspective of the bus entry that's to the north. So we're kind of northwest of the building, looking southeast. You can start to see some of the campus that's developing beyond the property that we've purchased a couple of years ago and will be developing into. The athletic complex is kind of in the background. We have a few images of that later. But from this perspective, you can see the buses on the left, where we're reusing the existing bus lot that is between the new high school and the existing junior high school. So that bus lot will serve both the ninth through 12th graders that are coming to the new high school, as well as the sixth through eighth graders that are going to the existing high school, which will be converted to the middle school in the future. This perspective gives us some views of the two courtyards that we've designed into the plan. Those are critically functional for both kind of daylight into all of the circulation spaces, as well as the innovation hub that's right there in the center of the of the building, as well as a lot of our extended learning areas that are really core to the learning communities that are distributed throughout all of the academics. Another aerial view this time from the southwest, so we can start to see the evolution of the the event entry, specifically the theater and the music spaces that are in the foreground, and then the arena that's in the background. You can start to see some of the branding that we're incorporating into this, where we have some of the Kings logos, the knight head, as well as the knight head and the shield on different parts of the building. So that really starts to allow us to really infuse the brand language, the colors, some of the forms that are kind of iconic to the idea of the castle, reminiscing back to the castle, but trying to interpret it in a more contemporary way, because we're building in this century and not in the 12th century. So doing things in a very contemporary but deliberate way so that it relates to, sorry if I'm blocking your views here, so that it relates to the students that are going here and that will be going here for the next 50, 80 years. So this gives us some perspective of the overall athletic development that's happening, where we can see the new baseball and softball field in the background. On the left, kind of upper-left part of the image will be our multipurpose soccer stadium. That will be a field that will host both soccer, as well as lacrosse, and some other outdoor sports. Just in front of that, we've got our six additional tennis courts that we're looking at. And from this perspective, we can see the parking for the students, as well as kind of the drop-off. And then over to the right, the kind of repositioned bus lot that allows for all the growth that's directly adjacent to the new building. This gives us a different perspective with that multipurpose field for the soccer, lacrosse in the foreground. We can see the softball and the baseball on the left with the bus lot in the back. We can also see the relationship of this entire athletic complex to the stadium and the parking. So that parking that's there in the upper-right part of the image will provide parking for the students throughout the school day, and then for events, for the event entry, as well as events at the stadium in the evenings. So it's specifically intentionally kind of located central to this development, so they can serve all of the athletic facilities on the southern part. This gives us a slightly different perspective. From this perspective, you can start to see the walking trail that moves around and through all of the athletic facilities. This will be good for both people who are trying to get to the individual facilities, as well as the students who can be using this throughout the day for just general health, getting outside, stretching their legs. I believe, Greg, help me on this, is the City of Mason the one that wanted to connect to this potentially?
Yeah, we're looking to connect this trail to potentially the Mercy Trail Complex that was created that goes around Mercy. So this trail is about .73 of a mile. Anything, we're working on a way to potentially connect up to Kings Mills Road over to the Mercy Trail as well.
Yeah, so the intent with this, that it provides that kind of outdoor experience and connectivity for the students, there's a small kind of elliptical shaped, I don't know what you call that peanut-shaped thing in the bottom. That's meant to be kind of an outdoor classroom that we're looking at as part of this landscape package. That's an area on the site that our landscape architects have identified that has some really unique features. So that's something that we're considering as we move forward through the DD process. This was a view of the event entry that was released during our schematic design. So a few months ago, this is kind of what it looked like. The feedback from the district was it just didn't kind of, wasn't exciting enough. We wanted to kind of relate back to some more of the Kings branding, specifically kind of some of the castle themes, but maybe not so literal. We also wanted to take into account some of the budget issues that we came up during our schematic design pricing, where we would address the volumes, as well as the materiality of it, so we could both reduce the volumes and simplify some of the material selections that would help bring the cost of this part of the building down. And so we went through a series of iterations with the community advisory team last week. And I think those are the next few slides that we have, where we showed them a few of them. Go to the next one. I'm ready. So we wanted to show a literal castle, just to say, okay, here's what it might look like if we literally interpreted it like a castle. And the general feedback from the community advisory team was thumbs down. They didn't like it being that literal. And so we showed a other series of options. We had the scallops on a much larger scale from the original concept design, and this too was kind of a lukewarm welcome at best. Fortunately, we came with several other iterations. So the next one shows much more of kind of a prominent massing. When you look at castles themselves and you kind of start to deconstruct them architecturally, you see these large kind of masses and volumes. So this was welcome, both from the kind of the, just the presence that the building has on the site and the approach that people would be coming, especially visitors, kind of intimidation factor of having these large, dark masses, especially kind of the large branding graphics that we see on the right-hand side. But this didn't really have the detail or the finesse. So the next option had a little bit more variety in terms of colors and material palettes, started to introduce some different types of features in terms of detailing of the brick. We could still keep it simple and easily constructible, which helps us keep things within the budget, but gives it a little bit more character than just kind of the big, bold masses. So this was specifically, the feedback on this one was we didn't like the large metal panels on the upper left. We didn't like the scallops near the main entrance. So we took the feedback from the community advisory team and started to iterate on that further to come up with this option. So we tried to preserve some of the large, kind of bold masses, particularly at, on the left-hand side, the large K, the Kings K up there is on top of the fly space that's above the main stage. So that's kind of the largest mass that we see on the site. And then we're pronouncing the two masses that are adjacent to the main event entry, where it says Kings on the right-hand side. That's down low. That's the main event entry and the student entry. And then on the right-hand side of that, where the two knight heads are, is the arena space. So behind that is the arena. That entry is kind of on the upper level, so you'll kind of go around the track before you descend down into the bleachers. The students will all be on the lower level with the locker rooms and things. So this starts to kind of incorporate the prominence of the massing from the one scheme that the CAT team liked, as well as some of the details of the other, and then giving a little bit interpretation in terms of how those castellated forms that are on the roof start to create some angles and makes it feel a little bit more contemporary. So then we wanted to kind of animate this a little bit more and see what it would look like at night. That wasn't that one. So we wanted to look at kind of the details of this and incorporating the brand, not just the brand logos, but also the brand colors. So we've taken the Kings red and the Columbia blue and started to kind of sprinkle them throughout, thinking, how could we do this economically within the budget that we're working with? So we're looking at things like simple glazed bricks, which can come in a variety of colors. We're looking at potentially doing some sort of translucent panels with very simple LED lighting to bring it to life in the evening time. I think that might be the next one. Yes. So this is what it might look like on a Friday night, when visitors, kids are coming to either an evening basketball or evening volleyball game. If they're coming to this, they'll be parking in the parking lot there on the right in the foreground and going to the stadium that's just beyond. You can see a little bit of a glimpse on the middle right of the stadium lights that are beyond there. So this will definitely be the experience that people have when they come to the Kings High School in the evening. This might be the experience that you have when you come to the Kings High School. So we wanted to start to explore, because we're at that stage where we're getting into the details, we wanted to start to explore, how can we really bring this building to life throughout the day with details, materials, and especially at night with different lighting effects and color. So we've got, I think, a couple more views of it. One at the night, so you can start to see how we were incorporating some of the lighting effects on the academic part of the building. So because of that kind of mass and presence that that has on Columbia, and even on, I forget the name, to the north of us, this road out here.
King Avenue.
King Avenue.
King Avenue, yeah. So King Avenue, as you're kind of driving down, you'll see that mass from the distance, because it is such a prominent mass, but starting to use some of the features that we've designed into that to break it up, to activate it with different colors, like the red at the stair towers, the blue that appears to be kind of glowing from behind it, and how that starts to work with the very simple moves that we're showing in the architecture of that floor plan, where the walls are kind of folding back a little bit. So that really starts to kind of bring this to life at night, and that would definitely be the first thing that people see when they come down Columbia, as they come to the high school. And this is a bit of a closer-up view of that entry. You can see the stairs on the left and then the ramp that's along the right-hand side. All of this is because the way that we've built this into the topography, that the main level of the building is kind of up near where the baseball field is now, but because the way the hillside slopes down, we're able to take advantage of the topography to get us down, get the parking down kind of midway between the main level and the stadium, so that that parking can serve both. And then we have just a really nice, gentle ramp and just a few steps to get up to that level, so that all kind of helps communicate that sense of ascension as you come into the building. And that's all I got for now. Is it as cool as your students? It's, yeah, it's pretty cool. So we'll keep working. Unfortunately, we got some more time before, you know, we come back again, but we'll keep working to continue to make it as cool as your students, so they will be just as proud of it when they come to it as we are, as we're designing it.
Is that a balcony there off of the gymnasium?
Good eye, yes. We're starting to kind of think about different little features that we could put in there, maybe a little balcony promenade thing that could project out. You know, these are just some ideas, and, you know, they will continue to be refined as we kind of go through, but it could be a fun place for kids to get their picture taken, prom photos, homecoming photos, things like that.
Very nice.
I think it's safe to say that it all needs to light up now.
I mean, the beauty of LED lights is they're relatively inexpensive. They're easy to maintain, so once we get them detailed and put in place, then they kind of can last for the majority of the life of the building. I've got some LED lights in my house that I purchased from Ikea like 12 years ago that have been plugged in for all that time, and they're still running, so. Any other questions?
Very nice.
That's really good, Gregor. Thank you for the opportunity to share this with you, and I look forward to the next time. You.
Thank you for hosting our students today, too.
Just reiterate to, just reiterate a couple of things that Gregor said, that what prompted some of these initial work with our CAT team was that through that schematic design, the budget analysis process, so when they start to price things, the material selections and the way it was shaped, and the engineering that would have had to go in to create those, that crown or circus tent type feel, it prompted an additional look at some more cost-effective measures. And this, you can see the roof in these features are flat, but there's some, there's some engineering or design around that to make it not, to have a little bit of shape and structure to it. So that's, this is a, you know, we'll get more information on what that savings looks like, but these are the types of examples of, we talked about last time, value engineering to bring that percentage down from the price. And so we're, these are the types of things we're looking at. So I appreciate you bringing that together on short notice. I think these are hot off the press. I'm at about 4:30 today, so, yeah, so we appreciate it. And then we've heard, Gregor, that these images will animate, and cars will move, and people will move throughout this image, and we're looking. Yeah, we will be able to see the flow and the folks moving, so anyway, thank you. So last in our presentations this month, we are very excited to have our JF Burns administrators, Ms. Cheryl Montag, and Assistant Principal Erica Thompson, some of their extraordinary teachers, to share with us kind of the strategic initiative update from JF Burns, keeping in line with how we've done it with other buildings. So we are really excited to see how this group of folks and our staff at JF Burns are bringing the initiatives to life in their classrooms and buildings. So I will turn it over to Principal Cheryl Montag.
Thank you so much. Our teachers have read the book, and you can see the book out there, Thinking Classroom, Building Thinking Classrooms in Mathematics. And this evening, we have Jessica Contrado, who's a first-grade teacher, and Susan Grebe, who's a third-grade teacher. And they're going to explain to you what it looks like to have a thinking classroom and how it perfectly aligns to the Power Five Future Skills.
First, just after reading the Thinking Classroom, we kind of had to rethink and reimagine our own classrooms. In this, they talk about defronting a classroom, so they want it so that the kids are being, taking more responsibility and more initiative in their own learning and not making it so much where the teacher's standing in front of the classroom and just regurgitating information to them and having them do it back to them. So in this classroom, this is a second-grade classroom in our building, and so basically, they kind of turn the desks so they're not all facing the front of the classroom. Another big thing in this Thinking Classroom is using vertical whiteboard surfaces. And the thought behind that is, A, that it is dry erase, that kids, you know, we want them to take risk and be willing to make mistakes in their learning. And so this material and this mode gives them a chance and opportunity to write down their thoughts, but then also, like, if they're not happy with it or they're like struggling with something, they can erase it. I know in the book, when we read it, it kind of talked about too, like, instead of, you know, a lot of kids, especially like higher thinkers and higher learners, they are afraid to put something down on paper pencil because they don't want to be wrong. And this gives them a chance and opportunity to put that down and take risk and be able to change it as they're going. And then just once you kind of, the classroom setup has kind of changed, then kind of start going into thinking about what kind of task you want to give to the students. So up here, we have some examples ranging from first grade all the way up to fourth grade of tasks that we have done in the classroom. When we think about the task that we're choosing, we're looking at what we're working on in the classroom at that time. So like right now, in my classroom, we're working on multiplication and division. So some of my activities are based upon having them apply the skills that we've taught them in the classroom. Other times, it's introducing a new idea to them and seeing what they can come up with. I know one of the things, one of the activities I did was introducing just the idea of repeated addition as multiplication. You know, some kids have that. They know their multiplication facts already, but there's other kids that they're still learning it. And I think too, just in our own classroom and in our buildings, we have such a And I think too, just in our own classroom and in our buildings, we have such a large English language population that these tasks allow kids to kind of an entry point at all levels. So they kind of like to say low floor, high ceiling. You know, lets them come in at a smaller, you know, if they can't do it, a lot of the time it's just drawing pictures on it. Then you, I think later on we'll show you some where some of them are just drawing models. Others of them are actually creating multiplication equations and creating charts and T-gra, T-charts to kind of model their thinking. And then from the task, you want to go ahead and talk about that? To introduce the task, we did it in different ways. I started whole group on the carpet right there. And then this one is called, what's the problem? So I gave them the answer, which this one was 10. So reiterating our facts of 10, our friends of 10, and then they had to come up with the problem. And so they just started basically what we had been practicing, which was addition one plus nine, two plus eight. And then a few of them started, well, can I do subtraction? I was like, well, can you? They're like, yeah. I'm like, okay, go ahead, try it. Or I noticed, and later I'll show, we'll show a video. Some of them started doing three-digit addition or they did four and they started breaking apart the number more. And then we did a walk around where the students looked at each other's work. And then they noticed, well, they did subtraction or they did three addition, three add in addition. And then they went back, then they went back and like, okay, using what you learned or saw from your friends, what can you add to yours? And then we also did a different number. And then the other ones, they kind of started gathering in like small groups or a whole group just around the teacher to introduce the task. So there's different ways that we have done it. And then visiting each group and walking around. And then the ways we group them with first grade, we do groups of two. It's just better with the research that shows smaller groups. And then in second, third and fourth, and second, I think can go between two and three, and the upper grades they do three. But we have different ways, like I just right now assign partners to them and they don't really know any difference. Susan, she, this is her, this is your kids, right? She has different fun food themed cards and they each pull a card. And then around the room she has the like sweets or breakfast or dinner foods, and then they just go to where their card is. And then we just put them in groups. Travis in fourth grade, he uses a website called Flippity that I think like just picks up different random partners. Think they joke and call it the wheel of doom, is what the kids call it now. And then once they have their partners, you just, after you explain the task, then they're ready to go. And you just, they take their materials. Sometimes it's just standing at the whiteboards or can you grab that paper? Or for some of mine, like for first grade, I, they can't draw these yet because we're still working on those fine motor and planning skills. So I have like folders of different activities that I just stuck in page protectors. So when they're ready, they've done one, they come show me, I check it real quick and then they can just flip inside, go on to the next one. And I can like, I'll, so you guys can see, I'll send one on each side. So one's Hexagon Havoc, they have to put like numbers, but they can't touch or next door numbers, like one and two can't touch. Two can't touch one and three. So it's non-curricular is what we started with. And then we've started to get into the curricular based task, like we did one today called gift giving. And I have three dogs. So anytime I incorporate my dogs into a math problem or into anything, they are fully engaged. So today it's, you know, holiday time. I was like, I have $10. I need your help. I gotta go buy my dogs a gift. I need Callie, Colby and Lily, they need a gift. So I had a little chart that had the gifts on it and the prices, they had $10. I was like, okay, I need help, three dogs, three gifts. So they went to town and it was so cute to see the different ways they, some just made a list. They could get treats, they could get a dog bed and then they could get a leash. And then some had extra left over and they're like, and this to share. So it was really cute. Some just made a list. Callie gets this, Colby gets this, Lily gets this, or some went right to the math. One plus this plus this equals that, you know, and equals their 10. And then I was like, oh my goodness, guys, my grandma just sent me a text message and she's giving me five more dollars. Now how much money do we have? 15. I was like, okay, now we have $15 to spend. What else could you get? So kind of trying to relate it to them or connecting it like any to me, or then some of them were like, is this real? Like, I don't know, is it? And then they're just funny with that. So, and then again, we kind of regrouped, they shared some other ideas. Or here's like drawing pictures. I think I got the idea from Susan with her party one and like she had party guests. And you want to explain yours?
So in my task, I told them I was planning a party and I had to rent some tables to seat everybody at. So first I told them that we had, I think I said 24, I had 24 guests coming. So I said, I need to rent tables. We want to see how should I, what size tables should I get? So they were all like, is this really happening? I'm like, yeah, you guys, I said, I'm too busy. I need your help. You guys have to do this for me. So they were, you know, all went into their groups and they're working and they're all getting excited. And I'm walking around and it's interesting to just kind of see how some of them are doing it. And then just kind of like posing questions to them to kind of extend their learning. So at one point I just said, hey, guys, I said, I, you know, I just got some more RSVPs and it's like, we have 11 more people coming. They're like, are you kidding me? I just did all this work. And I said, guess what? This is how it happens. And so they, they went back to their boards and they're like, I had to erase everything. And I was just like, well, go off what you already have. And then one of the things we've been working on is what multiplication is with the commutative property. And so one of the groups, basically I heard them talking and they're like, hey, we can just flip everything. So instead of having one table with like 36 people at it, we can have 36 tables with one. And so then I went over, I was like, hey, guys, it's like, if I'm going to a party, do I really want to sit at a table by myself? They're like, oh. So then we kind of talked about too, about, well, which one do you think would be best? And then we kind of kind of talked through that. And then when we regrouped and the kids like were looking at their chart and one of them goes, it's the commutative property. We use the commutative property. I'm like, good job, guys. But no, I think they all get really, really super excited about doing these when they come in in the morning and they see that I'm like, hey, just drop your stuff off and meet me. I'll just pick like a random spot in the room to meet at. I'm like, meet me over there. They're like, we're doing groups, we're doing groups. So I, I really like this. There's a lot of collaboration. One of the pros with using the vertical whiteboard services is just like the flow of information. So if you have one group that's kind of stuck on something, they could be like, hey, well, look at next door at the group next to you. What are they doing? What could you take from that? And I think that was really hard for them initially because they all wanted to like block their board and say, hey, they're cheating. They're looking at me. I said, hey, guys, think about this. I said, when I'm stuck in the real world, I said, I don't just sit there. I said, I go and I try to find somebody who can help me. And I think that this leads itself well into that, like you're constantly working with people. You're constantly bouncing ideas off of other people. You're gonna make mistakes. Things are gonna change. And I think this, you know, works really, really well with what we're doing. And I think it gets the kids up and moving and they're not just sitting there. So I really enjoyed it in the classroom and I know the kids have, this right here is in fourth grade, Mr. Brown. And here's one of his kids kind of like explaining their thinking. And then we also, did you want to talk about yours? One of the things that I know that Jessica did with hers is she had our kids walk around. I don't know if you want to show that video.
So that was that, what's my problem? And they had the answer. And then they were all amazed, that one group, like he, the boy that was there, he's like super fast with math. And he just sort of took over. And sometimes you too have to stop and remind them like, don't forget about your buddy over here. Or when they go walking around the room, I'm like, hey dude, where's your buddy? They're like, oh goodness, where is she? And like, we'll hurry back. Or some of them are so cute. They just grab their hand and then they just start walking around together. But yeah, they were taking a look at each other's work to gather ideas to see what they could take from someone else, what they could apply. And then there's also a couple of pictures with them with their finished next door numbers, problems that we did. And we had first introduced it and then I told them if we get done with one activity, we could do it this again. And they all started to clap. I'm like, okay. So that was, they all thought that was exciting. Today when I had, they came back from special and we had, I had set up the room for the gift giving problem today. They were all like, yes, alright. They were all excited about it. So now that we started introducing it, they're enjoying it a lot. They've said it's fun. And in fact, at the end, we have a couple student testimonials.
So I think just overall, I think, I just think overall, I think the teachers that have been doing this in their classroom, we have teachers in first, second, third and fourth grade all doing this. And the feedback that we've gotten from everybody has been very positive. Thank you. And then the kids have been very responsive to it. So we've seen great things from this. And then did you want? And then, yes, we have the fourth grade task that the video showed. We have one for you guys to try out. Yeah. Are you smarter than a fourth grader?
This is homework, not to be done right now.
So this is one too, where in fourth grade, Mr. Brown likes to do, he likes to put like kind of three problems already up on the board. He has a mild, a medium and a spicy. And I believe this was the spicy one. So.
And it was spicy. I spent some time trying to figure this one out, I'll, I'll admit. So as for your homework, if you would like to work on this problem, at JF Burns, we have four expectations, respectful, responsible, safe and problem solver. So if you were to do this, you would be responsible and doing some work in your own time. And that connects to our PBIS initiative where we have King's Cash. So you could earn yourself some King's Cash doing this in your own time. Another way to earn some King's Cash is there's a tiny little QR code. If you use your phone, you can snap a picture and then it'll take you to the link of our padlet. And you can comment, leave us some comments or like or love all of the, the videos or pictures on our padlet. And just give us some feedback on what do you think about building thinking classrooms? You can, if you hold your phone up there and then just make your, your picture, your video bigger, sorry, your, your picture bigger, it'll show up in yellow. Yeah. We love the, the padlet because it just offers so many opportunities to share pictures and videos and, and links to things. And so we thought that would be a fun tool to share as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I'm, I'm a planner. When is this homework due? If we were to try it, when would you like?
Well, we're also personalized, so you can choose when you're a test.
Good answer.
That is a great answer. Thank you.
I think you're allowed to collaborate.
That is a Power Five skill, collaboration. Well, thank you all for one coming tonight, but also just your work in growing the skills that you're working on in the classroom. And then it's awesome to see how in a building thinking classrooms, I know you guys have been working on that, but it's awesome to see how it impacts the students. And so thanks for bringing that to life. It's important to us. We can, it's easy to talk about some of the things we're doing. But it's great to see how the kids and teachers are applying that. So excellent work. We appreciate what you're doing. And certainly thanks for taking the time out and it's, it's, it's good stuff. So anyone else have any comments?
I would just say that, I mean, there's no doubt we can see your passion. So thank you for what you do with these kids every day.
Absolutely.
Second that. I know I'm not smarter than a fourth grader, but I'll do my best. Would you like me to assume the agenda, Mrs. Phillips?
Absolutely.
Alright, so next on the agenda is public participation. It's like we don't have anyone signed up for that this evening. So next on the agenda would be the discussion items for the treasurer, Mr. Morrow.
Thank you. Items one and two are just the regular meeting minutes from prior month. I hope the board's had a chance to look, look over those. Haven't gotten any feedback, so I think we're good to go there. Number three is the standard monthly financial items. We're only three weeks out from the forecast and the forecast presentation. So I did link it back in just in case anybody is watching tonight can see that that was presented last month. And that's the projections for our next five years of, next five years of finances. And then also I linked in the fiscal responsibility webpage again, just continue to get that out there as a, if we can catch somebody every meeting or every couple, then maybe word can get around that, that's available on our website that shows a lot of the things that we're doing with the Board of Education to be fiscally responsible. I did also want to add that I'm at the forecast and this is just kind of an update, long-term. We had a health insurance meeting last week and our group is running very poor for this year. You guys will probably remember that last year we actually went down a percent in our health insurance cost. This coming year we went up one half a percent. So we're, we're lower this coming year than we were two years ago, which is fantastic. But our group as a whole is running very poorly the end of this year. So I built in a 9% increase in the forecast, but that was probably too conservative based on information I'm getting right now. So that's a big expense for us. We spend about $7 million a year in health insurance. So it's a pretty easy math. You get a percent increase, you're talking about 70,000. So it's something we'll be, we'll be watching as we, as we move forward because that is something that's changed in three weeks. As we say, when we present the forecast, it's the best information available at that time, but things are always evolving. Number four, Columbia Intermediate Builders Risk Insurance. So when you're doing construction projects, the owners of the buildings buy coverage that basically cover that if something happens to the structure mid, midstream, for lack of a better term, that you're covered to start over or repair whatever was damaged. So our insurance consultants got three quotes. I'm recommending to the board that they actually don't pick the cheapest in this case. We're talking about a $300 difference, but we think it's the strategic move. So typically our consultant goes with a company called CNA for this coverage. They were cheapest in this case, but one of their competitors, Chubb, was just above. So we think this is setting up for the high school where we're talking about 100,000 plus cost. But if we go with Chubb, who was nearly the lowest, then we kind of get two things. One, it shows Chubb that, yeah, be competitive at the high school because we're willing to go with you guys. And then two, it shows CNA who normally wins all of these jobs that you have a competitor in the market, so you better come in with your best for the, for the big project. So. And then two, it shows CNA, who normally wins all of these jobs, that you have a competitor in the market, so you better come in with your best for the, for the big project, so. We're kind of using this opportunity to spend an extra three hundred dollars to look ahead to, to when it really counts. And the coverage is essentially identical, and companies our owner's rep has worked with, um, both being good companies, so we feel good about that. And then number five, the public records log, um, you can see we're, we're caught up as of today.
Any questions for Mr. Morrow?
I have one, one quick question, so loo- looking at the builder's risk, it has project dates of January first through October thirty first.
Correct.
If it extends beyond that October thirty first, will our costs go up, or will we still have that same cost?
We'll have to increase the coverage, because they, they date it based on the length. So that's one of the reasons that the high school is going to be substantially more, one, it's just a much bigger project, but two, its construction's going to span, you know, thirty-ish months. So you can probably see that one of the uh, quotes has an annual rate, and then it's kind of prorated down to that ten months. So if we needed to extend it, then we could.
Okay.
But this is the most recent information we have as far as should be done by October. But we'll, we'll extend it if we need to, because uh, it's an important policy if tornado came through and, and, for example, and broke down some walls that were partially constructed, then this would pay to rebuild them.
More questions for Mr. Morrow? Major motion. So with that, may I have a uh, motion to approve items one through five for the treasurer?
I'll make the motion.
Oh, I'll second the motion.
Mr. Morrow?
Mr. Scurll?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Groff?
Yes.
Ms. Callen?
Yes.
Mr. Belfrom?
Yes. Next on the consent agenda item are the items for the superintendent, Mr. Sears.
Yep, just one item tonight, um, before I do that, I want to um, one, uh, thank the Firecrackers for uh, their sneak preview, sneak peek last week. Mr. Spinner and group uh, did an excellent job, they were uh, very well done, but I do want a special shout out to Mrs. Phillips, who. Very enthusiastically welcomed the Firecrackers onto the uh, main, main floor, um, she did a great job with that, but um, this is Firecracker season, we're looking forward to them uh, participating in many events across the country. And uh, what you'll start to see each board meeting is a series of approvals for overnight trips for them. This one is a trip to Chicago for uh, to play halftime, uh, perform at halftime of the Chicago Bulls in January. Um, so we'll see some uh, approvals come in each month for our Firecrackers, but looking forward to a great season.
I believe their best scheduled performance is at Mackey Arena in the spring for the Purdue Boilermakers, so make that on your calendar. Were there any questions for Mr. Sears regarding the field trip? Alright, with that, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda item for the superintendent?
I will make that motion.
I will second the motion, Mr. Morrow?
Ms. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Belfrom?
Yes.
Ms. Callen? Mr. Scurll?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Next on the agenda are the discussion items for the assistant superintendent regarding matters of HR and business, I will turn it over to Mr. Spinner, Mr. Lucky.
Thank you, President Belfrom, Kings Board of Education. Five items under our column this evening, I'm going to uh, discuss one, uh, two, and five, and pass it over to Mr. Lucky here in a moment for two and three. Uh, first up is personnel items, couple items of note, first off, want to congratulate Mr. Dave DeVore. He has submitted his resignation for retirement purposes, Mr. DeVore has been with our Kings Local School District for over thirty years. Beginning at Kings Mills Elementary before moving to Columbia, and now residing at JF Burns Elementary, where he will, he will be missed, but we congratulate him on a fine career. And uh, look forward to working with him for the remainder of the school year. Uh, we also have another resignation due to retirement purposes, and I'll let uh, Mr. Lucky talk about Ms. Beth Simpkins.
Sad and excited at the same time for Beth, uh, another of our JF Burns family, so it's going to be tough. Uh, seeing these two fixtures of the community down there, uh, get to retire, so we're all a little bit jealous at the same time, but uh. Excited to see them in their, their next phases, so I've had a, you know, in, in all my time here, these are two folks that uh. Have, have really welcomed me with open arms and, and given me great uh, feedback and advice, so uh, I'll miss them both, but. Beth has been a, a fixture at Burns, she was at Columbia, she was in kitchens before that, so been here for a long time, uh, and we'll miss them both.
Thank you, Mr. Lucky, I also wanted to point out, uh, done, under temporary employment, we are recommending a few building substitutes for half day. Uh, if you'll remember back in the fall, we talked about our program with the University of Cincinnati, where we're bringing in uh, special education student teachers for half a day. To student teach, and then they stay uh, in those buildings, both SLE and Columbia for the afternoon to get experiences for themselves, but then also provide us with some uh, building substitute. Coverage, so we have a couple students that enjoyed their experience so much in the first semester that they rec, they uh, requested staying with us. For the balance of the school year as opposed to going to their second placement, so we're excited to welcome them back. But we also have a couple new names uh, joining the Kings family as well, so excited to, excited to bring them into the fold. Happy to answer any questions about personnel. Hearing none, item number two is board policies, this is a second reading, the first reading was on November thirteenth uh, during our, our work session uh, just about a month ago. So bringing these back around for a second reading and your approval this evening, happy, happy to answer any questions with regards to board policy. Finally, I'm going to jump down to number five, uh, the before and after childcare handbook revisions. This is a past practice of our before and after childcare uh, program, but we wanted to make sure that it was clearly communicated uh, for the balance of the school year, it was not in the handbook, so it is something they wanted to. Add midstream, uh, we will have more revisions of the handbook as we do each and every school year um, in the spring, but this is one item, they wanted to make sure that we were clearly communicating uh, at the moment, even though it has been a past practice for many years. Mr. Lucky?
First other item on here is a Peterman van contract. So we look every year to try to find efficiencies in our expenses, um, and van services are a large expense for the district. Mr. Morrow, myself, uh, Mrs. Martin got together, so we had uh, Broccolis and Brownies working together uh, to try to find some efficiency in van service. So Mrs. Martin's team uh, along with us and, and Peterman uh, came up with a plan and a strategy to try to start growing Peterman's van side of the business, so. They came back to us with this contract, uh, so we are able to transport to two schools to start, we've got the ability to grow this service uh, in-house. So the more kids that we are able to get uh, if, at specific schools, and this will change yearly. So the strategy is to take a look at this on a yearly basis, figure out where it makes most sense, because this has to make sense for our kids as well. Uh, so these two situations looked uh, like opportunities for us to capture some savings. At the same time, it's going to allow us, because we have some midday students that shuffle around from building to building, it's a lot cheaper to do it in a van than it is on a bus. So a lot of efficiency to be captured here, and hopefully we're able to grow it if it's the right fit uh, for us and our students and families.
Does this help at all? Mr. Lucky, you talk about those midday, those transitions on a bus, does that help us? Then would it help us in the evening at all, so that that bus, we know that bus is back and ready for the end of day, is that something we usually, that wasn't an issue?
Um, it definitely make you feel better about it, um, really, it, it'll, it'll allow for efficiency in time for some of these students, we'll be able to. Uh, one of the schools were able to push back a little bit uh, for their pickup, so it's always helpful to get kids to sleep a little bit longer. And, and just having some flexibility with some vehicles and drivers when things come up throughout the day, um, that we're able to, to attack with a van, that's much, much easier. One, it's much easier, most more cost effective to train that driver, uh, and uh, you can expedite that as well.
I was just going to ask about dr, having a driver, is that easier to find drivers for the vans versus the buses?
Absolutely. I'm taking uh, applications here tonight, if anyone would be interested in part-time work.
At the end of the year, will you do some type of a cost comparison of if you would have continued with the bus versus the end cost with the van?
Yeah, I mean, with our initial swipe, you're roughly looking at about fifty thousand dollars. So, and, and to grow from there. So in our world, that's a person. That's, that's substantial. Any questions on that? Alright, uh, the next thing you'll see is the ORC complacency, so yearly, our food service uh, has to show uh, compliance. We go, we, Mrs. Arlenhouse goes through this, goes through this process yearly, uh, so this is just one of those standard operating procedures that we go through uh, right now. Just to give you a heads up, uh, next month, we'll do uh, readings of our wellness policy, so we reviewed our wellness policy, didn't have any changes, just need to do a date update, so you'll see that at our next meeting.
Any questions for Mr. Spinner, Mr. Lucky? Alright, with that. May I have a motion to approve? Items one through five?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Morrow?
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Scurll?
Yes.
Ms. Callen? Ms. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Belfrom?
Yes. And this week I do see, Mrs. Martin, Mr. Freeman, you don't have any items?
We don't have anything for approval, but we do have one announcement, teaching and learning councils this Friday, nine thirty to eleven. Yep, Mr. Sears will be here to talk facilities, we're going to have the high school here to do a presentation on course selections and scheduling season. Um, SLE is coming to do their power five, this house presentation, and then there's one more, oh, the instructional coaches are going to give an update on their semester as well as personalized learning work. So it's a, it's going to be packed for an hour and a half, but a little bit of everything. Nine to ten thirty, that is whispering in my ear, that is what time it is. That's the only thing we have.
Thank you, Mrs. Martin. And next on the agenda are the items presented by the board. Being December, our first order of business then would be to set an organizational meeting for the beginning of the year prior to January fifteenth, so. What sounds good?
I'll just add that January fourteenth falls in line with the typical board meeting schedule, the second Tuesday of the month, so just, I had to make sure you all were aware of that.
Think the fourteenth would work for me, since it's when we normally meet.
I'm good with that.
Want to do that, alright.
Yeah, six P M on the fourteenth.
On the fourteenth.
Perfect.
And then we have the twenty twenty-five board meeting scheduled discussion.
So this item's on here, just um, I send out the board a draft of, of dates based on the second and third um, Tuesdays of every month, just wanted to make sure that. You guys still wanted the draft with the second and third Tuesdays at six P M. I can get that out to you in the next couple days for your review, um, just before I sent it out, wanted to make sure that, that that was still the plan.
Yep, I think so, and that's still with? One meeting in July and December?
It's, the last couple of years, it's been June, July, and December, so there's two months in the summer and then December around the holidays.
Right, okay.
So I'll get that out, and uh, if there's any concerns or questions, um, or want to add another meeting in any of those months, then I'll, I'll receive feedback and get back to everybody.
Alright, sounds good, thank you. And lastly, we have uh, president pro temp for, for the organizational meeting, so we need to. Nominate, just nominate the word, someone for president. Appoint someone as president pro temp for the organizational meeting, and till such time, we uh, vote on our officers for next year, so. You're all looking at me, I'm more than happy to do it until we assign officers during, during that meeting, if that's okay with everyone. Sure. Alright. That way, uh, my.
Perfect, thank you.
Alright, do we have any other items to present outside of our student liaison and legislative updates? So next on the agenda will be the legislative update, Mr. Scurll?
Thank you, um, just, just a few items to mention here, so uh, the General Assembly, I just wanted to note, has two weeks left to get the legislation to Governor Dewine. To signature uh, before the holidays, uh, there are, uh, no, nothing has been signed into legislation yet, but there are a few items. Um, so we've got here under Senate Activity, House Bill seventy uh, it passed, so that has made its way to Governor Dewine, and then if you go to the bottom of the page and on to page two. House also passed Senate Bill one fifty-four, um, as well as House Bill four thirty-two, those both went to Governor Dewine. It, it is noted that House Bill four thirty-two did contain an emergency clause, clause, so that one will go into effect immediately upon signature and filing with the Secretary of State. And then also, the House concurred with Senate adjustments on House Bill seventy-eight, so that as well goes to uh, Governor Dewine for signature. Then al- also other legislative activities are down below, so feel free to read through those and let me know of any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Scurll?
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda is the student achievement liaison update, Mrs. Phillips? Or is it?
Okay, so um, we talked just briefly at the beginning as far as how crucial interviewing is, and that uh, many of us were available for the intern. Students to come in and be interviewed, and prior to that, some people wondered, well, how do they, what's some of the prep work for doing that? And so uh, Mrs. Snyder had this uh, on uh, Twitter, and just that business consultant, Jim Foley, came in, and he has fifty-plus years, and so. His insights and things that he shared with his students in order to prepare for the interviews, I think is uh, something that was really appreciated by all of the students. Because the day was really filled as we were interviewing with students that were very confident and poised, and certainly ready to go out in the. Field and interview and secure a job. And JF Burns wanted to thank the community that came out this past Saturday to pack up all of the candy for troops. And uh, so we had lots of students and parents who were there helping JF Burns do that. And then um, this after, just this evening, um, Mr. Hendrickson um, was talking about how much he enjoyed working with our students. And this is just an example of when he came into one of the project lead the way um, architecture classes. So slightly fewer than the forty that were there today with him, but just another example of the work that S H P is doing. With our students through all of the design of the high school. And then Knights, Helping Knights, Mrs. Stroh Snyder is a third grade teacher at KME, and Corinne, or Karina. Macy did her internship program with her, working to uh, find out, you know, how do you go about adding humor? you know, how do you go about adding humor and teaching so you can keep all of the students engaged? So just some pictures of that. The junior high, I'm back to Thanksgiving, had turkeys up all around the school, and the students were all encouraged to write something on a feather and hang it to tell the entire school community what they were thankful for. So they had students and teachers involved in filling out feathers. And then our high school students talked a little bit about the small world at KME and how they helped with that evening of celebrating multicultural and heritage. And so just some pictures, the top ones are all of the elementary students, and then the bottom ones are more of the high school students. And then the high school also talked about the brain dissection, and so that's just a few more pictures of that. And in January, we will pick someone else to do the student achievement games. So be thinking of who would like to pick one.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mrs. Phillips. Yes, you are. I would agree with that, yes. She said, "Nice try." Next on the agenda is the executive session. We'll be entering into executive session for the following purpose: to consider discipline and compensation of a public employee or official. And upon conclusion of executive session, we will be adjourning this evening's meeting. So with that, may I have a motion to enter into executive session?
I'll make that motion.
I will second the motion, Mr. Morrow?
Ms. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Belfrom?
Yes.
Ms. Callen? Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Skrull?
Yes.
Have a good night, everyone. Thanks for coming.